Please.
Mayor's office.
Present.
Mr. Garba.
Here.
This is Leo D'Assen, the deputy mayor there.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Lee.
Here.
Notice of this meeting was provided to the Berners-Will News Carrier News and Star Ledger, filed with the municipal clerk and posted on the municipal bulletin board on May 25, 2016. Item number three, closed session, we already took care of that before this meeting. So we reopened our meeting and now we'll move on to pledge allegiance. Please all rise for pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, open session. At this point in the meeting, the mayor and council will have comments from any member to public. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and permit the opportunity for anyone who wishes to be heard, speakers shall limit their comments to five minutes. If reading from a prepared statement, please provide a copy and email a copy to the clerk's office after making your comments so it may be properly reflected in the minutes. Anybody from public who should be heard? Ma'am.
Hi.
Come on up and state your name. State your name for the clerk.
Sure. My first name is Gabrielle and my last name is Cooper. I live at 8 Main Street in Manhattan. G E R N. Actually, Mayor's office, you and I spoke.
Yes.
And you asked me to provide to the council an appeal to my refund request for my summer day camp.
For recreation, yes.
And I didn't get any responses, but I did thank Cheryl for being very attentive. But my argument was that, I even had the brochure here, that when I requested a refund for the camp, when I found out that the morning session of the camp, they don't provide any kind of accommodations for my eight-year-old to get from one camp to the other, the camp wasn't a fit anymore. So I called immediately for a refund, looked up the refund policy on page 20, called in and asked for the request, and it's hidden on the back, the new policy. I understand the policy had changed, I think it should have been there. So all I'm asking for is a refund of my full money that I paid for camp for my son so that I can put him in something that's more accommodating for us this summer, that can handle making sure that the kid is safe when I drop him off until when I can help him work. So, or would you just like to say yes then?
Would you like to say anything else? Council members, any questions?
The problem that we have had, which is why we implemented procedure, is that people sort of sign up for all this stuff and then sign up for other stuff and say, oh, well now I, you know, don't want to do this anymore. And it screws up our numbers. We've made commitments to other kids, your son is one of the number of kids in the camp, and we don't want people sort of willy-nilly signing up and then saying, oh, this sounds better, I'll move over here, just get my money back. Because, you know, poor Cheryl and Cindy are, you know, responding, we have outside vendors that, you know, one minute they're teaching a full class, the next minute, whoops, we may not have enough. And it's, it has historically been a problem.
Right. And I can understand that. And as I had said, I have no way of making sure my son has someone's hand to hold from the junior high gym to rejoin camp. And that's what, you know, $2,000 is a lot of money to pay for camp with these supplemental basketball, Interstellar, so popular, Benjamin's so excited about that. And I hope to stay in that, but when I go to work, I have to make sure that my son is being taken care of and there was no one to take him from one camp to the other. I needed to get him in a camp that is from morning till night when I can pick him up. So I understand that small process and fee, even though there was a $45 convenience fee when I did it online, which is usually what camps want you to sign up online. So $45 flat fee to sign up through online, I don't think a lot of them that. But then to hold another, it was going to be 300, my position has been amazing with trying to come up with other solutions that I wanted to do, thank you, again, I can't figure it out. But I want to do the one portion of that to give it a try, but the other six weeks, it's really impossible for a working parent to get your kid in the middle of the day to walk him across a busy parking lot in the pool. I have to get him in something that's going to be from morning till night.
Cheryl, obviously, we're not talking about a non, total non-refund, it was just the, what do we change, so 15 percent?
Yes.
So what's the dollar amount that?
Off the top of my head, I don't remember, but she wants to transfer, we transfer into the technology camp, so that automatically, so that part has no refund effect. It's just the balance of the rec.
About $1,300.
Yeah, I think you're correct, yes.
And so it's 15 percent of that, which we're talking at $100.
I think it pumps at $1,300 after the 15 percent. She paid for rec camps, I have it down there too.
It was, it was going to be about $200, which
Correct.
Isn't going to break anybody, but when you're paying so much for camp, and then I have, after this six weeks, I have another couple of weeks, give us $4,000 for the average family for one kid in the summer, 200 makes a difference.
We had asked, because we did raise some very quick points about safe transportation from when Parkland campus basically is on earth, and like a whole curve from Cheryl, we got on that, I don't know if we're able to propose, did we get that?
We don't transport.
No, I think at the last council meeting, maybe there could be some kind of arrangement for a safe passage. We talked to the chief this year, Janet.
Oh, I was going to add that council, yeah.
No, you weren't.
Yeah.
That question to get to you, we talked to the chief about maybe guards, we talked about some other ways that we could provide safe passage, because certainly this nice lady isn't the only person that would have that issue, and there's concerns about getting around.
Or if you want to hire personnel to do that, but, you know, everybody's camp is all different times. It's not like, you know, 2:00 we switch classes at 3:00.
Yes, that was clear.
Some camps are 2:15, 3:15, whatever. If you want to, want me to hire more people to do so, we'll see if we can do that.
Didn't say hire more people necessarily, but it just said.
Well, we have to hire some.
Because it's got to be more than more person.
It would be almost an all-day job to run all the children from all different places, because there's quite a few go from pool, parents bring them up from the pool, you know, different places.
See, I guess I thought when I signed up, because I don't think, you know, it's a lot of material covering a book and a lot of possible scenarios, but I assumed that maybe after the group was done, they'd go to the cafeteria, and at that point, they'd rejoin the rest of the group. That's what I just assumed. There wasn't any kind of, that's the way it was done, or anything to the contrary. And I know it distinctly said in, we had had this conversation, but the term does not provide transportation. I really never thought of that as transportation, because even the JCC provides transportation. They pick you up, they pick the kids up to the house and bring them home. So I thought of that as transportation, I didn't think from the gym to the pool, but he's a kid, he's a little child, he can't really walk across that lot by himself, if that's indeed where they even are. Maybe they are still in the school or something, you know. So it's, I think that when it gets to be too disjointed, I got too concerned that I'm not local during the day when I work, to take care of that. And I just wanted something that, you know, that had the variety, that the basketball that I was hoping to integrate, but.
So how much is the refund that you're asking for?
197, right? Something, I didn't.
What we were holding, correct.
So you're saying, one aspect of the camp, he's not going to be doing now, correct? So he'll still be going, or the whole thing is over with?
To do.
Because you can't go from one to the other.
Right.
So he's still going to go there. So how, where is he going to go after that?
I got to go find some, I have to go hook him into, I know that like Camp Riverbend takes a morning till night kind of thing, but, you know, that's.
Well, how would you get him from there to?
Drop in the morning and then I go to work and I pick him up and drive it.
Okay. So you're going to stop both camps and you're going to go to Riverbend, you're basically saying?
I don't actually have that planned yet, but those were options. There were some, there were a couple of different options.
So.
So I still didn't get my answer to my question, I'm sorry. How much is the amount you're looking for?
I think it's 197.
Around $200.
197.
Not equally, because that's.
No, of course not, no, nothing, nothing. The convenience fee is gone, that's fine. Cheryl.
The fee we're holding is about 197 out of 197. And 197 is like 15 percent of what she paid.
Okay.
Right. She paid about 18, 17 hundred. And I think 15 percent.
And then as the Interstellar was walked back and we were down at the back.
And the convenience fee, that's, that's a credit card fee that we don't want to try. That's the best.
I knew that when I was signing on to the, it says clearly when you're signing up, that's fine.
All right, so you're basically asking for a $197 refund this evening from the government body.
No, I shouldn't say that, no.
An extra 100.
An extra 197, okay.
Or, or really what would be just the, and like I said, I understand you keep some kind of the nominal, like the booklet refers, or as you and I talked about, not the 15 percent. And sometimes they charge you 10, 15 bucks or whatever, that's reasonable, but an extra 200 bucks is kind of a lot. So what I'm asking for is that the day camp, to get out of the day camp and then get the refund on that.
So does that affect then the rest of the camp? Do you have to like stop?
And I'm sorry, I want to say one thing. I tried to get, as soon as, as soon as I can hear this, which was at least feasible when I started the process, so that the spot could be filled. It dragged on, but I, you know, I tried to be accommodating.
Thank you.
There was something that wasn't, I don't really want to bring it up here, there were other circumstances that would not have been, would have been the first, you know, and I think that's, yeah, some people have the fastest days, especially circumstances, so I think we need to, it's special about that in private if that's okay with you.
And it's okay.
Okay, there are.
Thank you, thank you.
Anybody else from the public? Yes, sir.
I'm Joe Manello, 137 Jackie Hall Road. I just, I'm with a group of the basketball coaches who coached the travel team or the rec team, and we're very excited about the courts, they look great over by that. Well, we were concerned and wanted to understand what is going to happen in between the two courts. You know, what we were hoping for is to put some permanent benches in that area, because we're going to start.
How's your fundraiser going?
We can raise it, how much?
Okay.
We're fine with raising it. If you need a fundraiser, we'll do it.
I'm sorry.
And the reason I'm bringing it up is we're concerned, we've heard issues of volleyball and other, and our concern is if it's not solely basketball, and you have a volleyball game going on while kids are playing basketball, or you have soccer or whatever in the middle, that the kids who are playing basketball, because we're going to run a league there, could get hurt. Because the balls go flying, the basketball, and vice versa, the basketball go flying onto that middle court. It was laid out really well, there's that big area in the middle, but if you put some other activity in there, there's a risk to the players on both sides and in the middle.
Are activities normally scheduled when you have things going on?
I don't think it was considered that everything was going to be going concurrently.
And Jeff Delio and myself attended the meeting this weekend, briefly, we had other obligations, but that came up in that discussion with the coaches, erecting bleachers, possibly having a shed there to hold the scoreboards and equipment, so we wouldn't have to drag.
In the middle though?
Yeah, in the middle.
Because, you know, there's potentially, you know, maybe other uses, not concurrently. So when you say permanent bench, I'm trying to.
Yeah, the thing is.
I understand.
Permanent benches, you're not going to have any.
You're not moving.
Exactly. The bleachers were designed to be put on the end, John, correct, from all of our meetings?
Right.
We wouldn't be putting any bleachers or any kind of, you know, sitting areas in the middle of the courts, if that's what you're asking.
If this is a, you know, as I grew up and see basketball courts around in other towns, kids come in the summer, I just dropped off my kids with other kids to play.
Right.
If you have something going on the middle, in the middle, because they have every right to do something in the middle, why you have hopefully 20, 30, 40 kids who are playing pickup basketball, if you have something going on in the middle, it is going to get dangerous.
Well, I think that's.
It's a schedule, it'll be all function of scheduling.
So you intend to.
Not every game is going to be scheduled, because it's going to be open to the public also.
Well, no, it's open to the public, but there's going to be certain times you're going to have a tournament, or you're going to have something going on, there's going to be, you know.
The intention isn't to have multiple things going on simultaneously.
Right.
However, lacrosse may want to use it before the fields are open, for instance. They always used to use that area in the past, I don't know that for a fact.
So then it's not going to be really a, it's not owned by the basketball.
It's not owned by the basketball.
No. Again, the concern is if you don't lay, if you don't have it defined, that what's going to happen is on a, you know, a Wednesday night in the summer, and you have two basketball games, the group says, all right, we're going to play volleyball, or we're going to play soccer ball, or we're going to play lacrosse in the middle, and that's our life, and it's going to be a mess. And kids are going to get hurt.
It's intended to be scheduled by the recreation department.
So even at nights?
Yeah, organized events are intended to be scheduled, but non-organized events, anybody could go there and play, like you dropped your kid off tonight and they're going to play.
Right, they're going to play. If kids come tonight, let's say, and I hope, if, you know, kids were playing there Friday night, even though they weren't supposed to, but that means it's going to get used, which would be great, but if you have, and this develops into a park, like where kids show up and play five-on-five on two courts and then play for winners, et cetera, and then kids say, well, I'm going to do something in the middle, nothing scheduled, but someone says, I'm going to kick the soccer ball in the middle, or I'm going to do some other event in the middle, that you're going to have a mess on your hands. Because I will tell you, if a ball comes rolling and kids are running backwards playing basketball, and there's a volleyball or a soccer ball.
What's another basketball?
Hmm?
What's another basketball for that court?
That's a long way.
They're far enough apart.
The whole idea, that's a long way to go.
Well.
And a basketball is different than a soccer ball. A soccer ball is kicked and moves that. I'm not, I'm not trying to deprive anyone from the game, I love while animals.
I'm sorry, it sounds like.
Well, that's not true.
It sounds that way, it sounds like you.
That I'm trying to deprive someone from the game? No, I'm trying to keep kids from getting hurt.
Yeah, no, we all don't want, want people to get hurt. Just doesn't quite come across that way, I'm sorry.
Okay. And although, I will tell you, then, not being disingenuous, I mean, I tell them the truth, I don't want kids getting hurt. And that's what we're concerned about.
I think we'll have to go to the recreation committee and just establish rules too, because one of the things also, they're playing at night, we have neighbors.
Right.
They can't be just playing all night long and everything else and whenever they want. You know, what if they go out there at like 6:00 in the morning on a Sunday and hooten and holler and everything else also? There's going to have to be rules.
I have no problem with rules, I just think you should be concerned about.
I understand.
No, it's, it is a valid point, but a permanent bench is not something, I think, in the middle is something that we can.
That would be a far worse safety condition.
Who's going to move it, you know, when you, when you do have to use it for something else?
Plus it would ruin the surface, you can't just put a bench down, it's not made for it, we're going to be putting benches on the ends, I think.
But when we find it old, like, we did have a lot of talks about having, you know, when we're lining for other things or other activities, because other activities need practice areas as well, and we want to make sure the surface is going to be.
So do you see this as always scheduled, that the kids cannot just show up and?
Some regulations that have to come up with a.
No, I don't think it's going to be always scheduled.
I think the recreation department, when they have camps, they're going to want to use it, correct, Cheryl?
Of course.
For something? Okay, so that's going to have to be scheduled. If somebody comes and pick up game and there's an activity going on.
They have to leave.
Exactly.
Exactly.
So, there you go.
I'm not concerned about the scheduling, I'm concerned what happens, which is going to be out of the rec's control.
I mean, tonight is open and people can do whatever they want anyways. Is it not that for a long time?
Well, there was always a sign there, no this, 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 no skateboarding, no ice hockey, I don't know how they played ice hockey.
But it was open.
They filled it up in the winter time.
All the coaches, you know, were not trying, yes, to my love basketball, yes, I love my son's play, all of them. But I am concerned that if, when kids come to play pickup, that it becomes something different. And if kids are playing soccer, if kids are playing lacrosse, and kids are coming to play basketball, what happens to these?
I mean, presumably most of the year, except in sort of April, March, early April, if kids want to go kick a soccer ball, they can go to polo fields, they can go if there's no games, you know, for pickup stuff, wall cutter, and there are other places that are better for soccer, lacrosse than the basketball courts, the surface.
I'll tell you, I actually tended to, we counted who did that, sponsored a sports, I don't know, it was very well-respected and very well-known, I don't remember his name, and he talked about good sports and important sports, and said, you know, in the old days, kids just played, they were sort of, you know, it was out to themselves, everything was fine until parents.
I do not like it, that's why, that's one of the reasons why we love these courts, because we want the kids just to go and play pickup. I think that's what kids lack, everything is structured, like kids playing AAU, they have a coach yelling at them, sitting with them when they don't, you're sitting them down when they make a mistake, that's not what, that's not how you learn, you learn by trial and error. I just don't want them to learn by trial and error and hitting their head on the bed and there's other stuff going on. Indeed, all right, the point.
We will have to.
Thank you, sir.
We will watch it.
Anybody else from the public? Yes?
Mayor's office, can we give public comment on two issues that are on the agenda?
Sure.
The downward down, the Claremont steps and the deer management plan.
Okay.
Just brief comments, is it two or four here today?
No, you can, you can comment.
Okay. Hi, I'm Chrissy McDonald, I live at 59 Anderson Hill Road. I'm, the first thing I'm going to comment on and provide, I just want to go give my support for the deer management plan. We've heard a lot of people come and talk about the need for deer management, the fact that our forests are being eaten by overburdened deer, and we have a lot of exotic plant species from Europe and Asia that are taking over. We have very little regeneration of forests, so when the older trees die, we're not going to have trees coming out, so we know the reason for it. Ed English and the Green Team did an excellent job with their consultants working on the deer management plan, so I just am here to give my support for that. And, any questions? The second thing that I wanted to give support for are the Claremont steps. I live on Anderson Hill Road, but I did live on Somerset Ave, and I also feel that the steps are sort of an interesting landmark in the town. They're, you know, when they're restored, hopefully, they're going to be a very attractive feature, and they also provide a lot of convenience to the people living up on the hill there. But even for people not living there, I think they're a part of the town that is an attractive historic feature, and I hope that we're going to decide to preserve them.
We did bless them.
No, we have an agenda, we have a draft on the agenda this evening, yes.
Money question today.
And that's it.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice evening.
Anybody else from the public? No one else? All right, I'll close the open session. Presentations, Mr. Jessup, would you like to speak or you want to wait till later? Yes, sir.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. As you may recall, back on March 28th of this year, you adopted a resolution declaring certain blocks and lots in town as an area in need of redevelopment. Those areas consisted principally of a block on a parcel property on Quinby Street and a, what's common goes, a train station. From that time, your plan, or all of this, couldn't be here tonight. So according to all of the planning, our personnel prepared a redevelopment plan for that redevelopment area. The redevelopment plan essentially becomes the zoning for the area once it's adopted, supersede your existing zoning. That plan is before you tonight. That plan encourages downtown living for empty nesters and millennials, it encourages preservation of the historic nature of the downtown and the area, it protects the train station through, keeping an expanded space open to keep the train station and the concrete wall there protected and remaining in place, and it encourages parking for residents, for businesses in downtown and for computers. So the redevelopment plan does a couple of things. One, it governs the use in the area, and the use in this case in the redevelopment area is limited to residential and parking. Those are the only two uses that would be permitted in the redevelopment area. It does require historic preservation for both the train station and the wall. It requires certain minimum parking requirements per each bedroom count. There's a slight deviation from the one you received in your packets to the one that was asked me to consider now, so I just want to go over that briefly. Each one bedroom unit would require not less than 1.25 spaces per unit, each two-bedroom unit would require 1.75 spaces per unit, and each three-bedroom unit, they manually would require not less than two spaces per unit. In addition, according to the plan, any development would have to satisfy whatever requirements NJ Transit has for parking, because some of that land is currently owned by NJ Transit, as well as replacement of the current retail parking. So it's critical to the plan that retail parking be protected and be provided for, that commuter parking be protected and provided for, and the ratios I gave you, that residential parking is also provided for. From a height perspective, the current plan is before you, says that the buildings cannot be more than four stories or four feet. There are also standards in the plan for vertical and horizontal massing, different type of design features, architectural design features, some of them are called out based on existing buildings in the downtown, in the area, that in, for example, off-street parking inside the redevelopment area has to be shielded by residential. So if you picture a residential building on my Brook, there's parking maybe behind it, but you go see any of the residential parking from my Brook, and requires that that be shielded by residential by the building. The plan also contemplates only one ingress and egress, it's basically an acceptance sort of courtyard area right in front of the train station, again, keeping that expanse nice and open. And the plan also goes through the types of items in the plan that can be deviated from through variances by the planning board versus which types of changes, for example, use and height, which can't change without coming back with a plan amendment, which of course you all are major control of. On the plan itself, from this point, you have a resolution that would refer this plan, as you have it as I described it, to the planning board. With the redevelopment laws, it will be planning boards required to hold a public hearing and to provide any of their recommendations and findings to you. We are hopeful that the planning board will consider that at their meeting, I believe it's the next Thursday. And then from there, the planning board transmits any findings and recommendations back to you, the council, for your consideration. You can accept their changes, you can reject their changes, and then you would move forward with whatever the plan is at that point, after planning board hearing, public comment, consideration, et cetera. You would introduce that, the redevelopment plan, by ordinance, and then move for a public hearing and final adoption on the plan via the same ordinance. So there's a public hearing component of this at the planning board level, again, presumably next week, they can confirm that, and then there is also a public hearing component of this before this government body, where you go to finally adopt the ordinance. Once that ordinance is signed and adopted, you have a redevelopment, we already have We already have a redevelopment area. We have a redevelopment plan, which means we have an ability to consider more and more developers. And the critical part here is, the earlier we designate conditionally typically a developer, the earlier the program established and developer funding escrow to, A, pick up development costs of going forward basis, and we would also negotiate to pick up some more costs and borough costs that you can cover to get to this point. I understand a lot, you can't do that, because you have a redevelopment project, you have a project, you have a plan. This is the next step, getting to a redevelopment plan, so then we can get to the point where we can start talking to developers and again, designating one, and then reabsorbing the talent for its cost and picking up all the costs on a going forward basis. So we know it's a lengthy process, we know it's an expensive process, but it's more that ultimately we plan to put it back on the local complex.
Now, what flexibility do we have in terms of approving a plan that a developer proposes? Or is, is that as long as it's within the ordinance, we're kind of at their discretion?
So as long as the plan, the site plan that the developer puts together and sends to the planning board, as long as it does not violate any of the provisions of your redevelopment plan, the one before you, then the planning board will end up granting that application for site plan because the project will match the requirements in your redevelopment plan. It's only if the developer comes to you and says, I know it says nothing with residential, but I really want it to be an amusement park. Well, that's not, that's not a permitted use under the plan, and that's not a deviation that the planning board can say, notwithstanding what the council put together for such a plan, we're going to grant it variance and let them build an amusement park. They are limited to what's inside the, what the limits that are inside the redevelopment plan. But if they meet all the criteria within the redevelopment plan, then they, you basically have a, has a right to go ahead and build that project. We will also have, as part of this process with a developer, a redevelopment agreement that will govern many items, including construction, timetables, permits, et cetera. One of the things we have done in the past in certain circumstances is build the actual site plan into the redevelopment agreement, which provides another layer of control because you, the borough, the borough council, are the ones that execute everything.
So once it comes back from the planning board, we have some say in the process and control?
Well, there's no. Good, it starts now.
Of where, yes.
Right, it starts now. It's, you know, your first level of control is this redevelopment, which is something. So you are, you know, if you choose to move forward tonight and adopt a resolution that refers this plan to the planning board, you are essentially saying, we are okay with the use that is in the plan, we are okay with the height that is in the plan, we are okay with the parking that is in the plan, we are okay with the architectural, you know, the historic nature, historic preservation, et cetera. You know, parking for, for businesses in downtown commerce, all of those things. You're saying, if they put up a site plan that matches that, then that project will be able to go forward.
I have two questions. The first is, with, I was trying to visualize, so we had, you're talking about four stories, 48 feet. We have all of our existing parking needs, and then we have the parking, you guys reduced slightly, one-bedroom allotment, two-bedroom allotment. So are you envisioning 100 units in two floors and two floors of parking? How do you foresee, I, I, there's no architectural rendering, and that has to all be done, I understand that.
Right, it's a developer's challenge, right?
Right. But I was trying to just visualize potentially 100 units in those two buildings with parking, which might be doubled. And I have to say, I'm not imaginative enough.
So thankfully, that's, you know, a job of, that's the challenge of the developer to do. But I think what you would likely see is some sort of platform parking, maybe two levels of parking with, you know, if one of them is, you know, set below, for example, then you have room for two or three stories of residential. You have, you know, it's across two buildings presumably, right, on each side of the train station.
Right.
The redevelopment area also includes that gravel lot that is behind the train tracks there, and one of the things that we've talked about with the planner is requiring a developer to sort of make a connection from that back lot out towards the downtown as a more sort of inviting and useful spot to satisfy parking. There's also, you know, the lot over on Quinby Lane.
Right.
Right, which is pretty tiny.
Right, right.
I mean, that would leave the post, there was no mention of the post office, so you would leave the post office there and just make.
Well, remember.
Maybe multi-level parking for the post office?
Remember that as of now, the post office lot itself is not a lot that was included in the study as an area of redevelopment. Right, we studied the parcel next door, but we did not, we did not actually study the post office parcel itself. So we could, at this point, just put, throw that in the mix and say to the developer, what can you do now if you have both of these?
I took the wrong thought in my mind.
One of the things you can do is certainly go back and study that parcel and see whether it qualifies and you put it into the redevelopment, into the redevelopment area. And that may open up some options. And it may be that the developer says, look, I'm close, but I really need an extra 25 spaces or something. And then maybe that's when we look to that lot and figure out what various alternatives. We also don't yet know what New Jersey Transit's going to require. Right, parking, that's a big, what we do know is from other experiences, is Transit is anxious to unload their property, they don't want, you know, to be in the parking business. Whether they're going to require one for one, whether they're going to require one and a half for one, or whether they're going to require a half for one, or anything in between, we don't know yet. And that will be a significant factor in trying to figure out exactly how all parking can be satisfied and still build a number of units, whether it's 70 or 80 or 100, certainly not more than 100 according to the plan, but whatever that number is, in a way that financially makes sense, where you can get it done and make it a successful project for the downtown.
All right. My next question is, you know, the 600-pound gorilla in all of our backgrounds is COA.
Yes.
And there was no mention in your proposal, you know, do we have control over how many units?
Yes. That's put you off, councilman.
Now, wait, we know where we're going.
But, but yeah, so, so the plan, which is, you know, again, your plan, yeah, the plan does not have a specific COA component to it. That is intentional, that is, when we talk about projects, we sort of prefer it that way. COA is, is sort of suggesting, it is an error-evolving.
Right, we don't know, but we know it's there.
Which is, which is why I personally don't like putting a requirement in a plan before you even have an idea of a project, get along with a developer and a regular unit count and the economics to know, this project can handle 20%, if that's what's set in the plan.
So that becomes the planning board's duty?
It also, we more put it on the council, we negotiated in that redevelopment agreement I mentioned earlier. So once we have a redevelopment, we're going to enter into what would be a 90-plus-page contract redevelopment agreement that designates that, gives them the power to develop. It's a whole bunch of contingencies and requirements on what they have to do, importantly, carry out the redevelopment project. One of those will be COA. And so that agreement, which will be negotiated at a time when we all have a much better sense of exactly what we're looking at building, we'll be able to know, well, our goal is 20%. Look, we started doing all the math, we looked at the numbers, we said we've got 85 units, here's the way the math looks, it can really only afford 18%, probably okay with that or not. And we make that decision, we answer to that redevelopment agreement at a time when we have enough information to really be able to make that decision. Right now, frankly, to sit there and say, 20%, those, under any circumstance, the project may be down, or even on, maybe 30%, 50%, whatever, town by town, it's all different because of town by town requirements are different, and people are handling it in different ways.
And at this point, no town knows.
That's exactly right. It's a significant issue, it's one that, it's one that absolutely will be addressed, and it would be addressed, the time to address it is in the redevelopment agreement, when we're negotiating with a developer, we have a sense of what, exactly what they are trying to build, and we can say, we think your project can afford it, and we would like that to be, you know, the requirement and negotiation.
Right, but we said before that, once we've adopted the ordinance and reestablished the zoning, the developer basically can, as long as he meets the zoning terms, can construct whatever project fits. At what point are we negotiating COA or any of those restrictions?
So he can build what he wants, but whether or not it has an affordable, a senior restricted or some other requirement are not things that are part of the site plan, they're things that are going to be negotiated according to the redevelopment agreement. So the process from here, let's say the planning board holds their public hearing on the plan, they send it back to you, you introduce it by ordinance, you finally adopt it by ordinance. Let's say we have developer Bob out there, ready to go. We can, the night that you adopt your ordinance approving this redevelopment plan, you can adopt a resolution that conditionally designates redevelopment law as the redevelopment for that project. That, that does two things. One, it again, permits us to establish an escrow to make redevelopment Bob start paying all of your costs. And two, it will say that his right to build is subject to negotiation and execution of a redevelopment agreement, the full-blown 100-page agreement within 120 days, 150 days, whatever that date's going to be. Within that time period, we're going to sit down and have several meetings with Bob and walk through his project, his blueprints, his revenue distribution, the way he tries to park the project, all his architectures, all of the different things that make up that project. And we're going to say, this is your parking requirement, this is what we want your housing requirement to be, this is how we want you to improve the walkway area from the background lot towards the downtown area. These are the, some additional, you know, we want you to employ, you know, local contractors or subcontractors that want, all these different types of requirements that can go into redevelopment will be negotiated during that time period.
All right, so we still, we still have that opportunity to address all of those issues.
Absolutely, yes. And the time to do that is basically after you've got a plan in place and you negotiated a project with a developer. Because at that point, you'll have a really good sense of what the developers try to do there.
And one clarification, Jenny, you mentioned four stories at 48 feet, and I thought you said 40 feet before. What's?
No, it's four stories or 48 feet.
Got it.
48 feet. And what that does is that allows for 10-foot ceilings in the residential units. 10-foot ceilings essentially require about 11 and a half feet of total deck space, 11 and a half to 12 feet of total deck space, four stories, you get 40 feet if you'd be able to have, you know, higher ceilings in, in what would be a nice sort of, kind of high level of the project.
Okay. Who else?
Roughly be the height of the station.
Yes, exactly.
That's basically what it is.
Yeah, basically the height of the station. And probably similar in designs somehow.
Right, you can see the pictures right here, you can see down below, one, two, three, and then the dormers at the top, it's a dorm.
But you're not going to be looking at a parking deck or other things that are just, you know?
Or the catenaries that you see up there with the New Jersey Transit, all the overgrowth.
Again, the plan requires that, remind all the parking, all the off-street parking be shielded. Right, so it's basically how we've done these things.
That's it? All right, Matt, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, move on, items of business, ordinances. All right, to take in a motion to move that ordinance 16-1720 requiring all residential dwelling units to have smoke detectors in amendment chapter 15 in the Borough Code entitled Fire Prevention, be introduced by title, passed on first reading, published reporting of law, and that a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning 7:00 PM, June 27, 2016. I'll move. Move, right? Councilman Schmidt?
Second.
Second by Councilman Youngblood. All in favor?
Isn't the code down? Does it have, the fact that it's only, it's been inspected or it changes over?
There's been some, Jack, there's been changes.
This was at the request of the fire official, and it doesn't add any inspection, it just allows a smoke detector inspection to be part of the rental housing inspections.
Oh, okay.
It's the end of the law.
Okay. So it's, I thought it was.
Look, currently, it is only provided at the ordinance level for those that are, by not more than two households.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, it was moved by Mr. Schmidt, second by Mr. Youngblood. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, the ayes have it. All right, resolutions, we have 16-111 through 16-118. Anyone want to call any big discussion?
Can we pull 16-113? I just have a quick question on that.
Sure.
And 114, please.
All right, good, yeah, first, 113.
The municipal alliance, because I was trying to match the numbers in the package with the bills that we're paying. Are we paying, does, do all four, I should know this, I know, do all four municipalities pay the same? So we're all paying 4,000, was it 4,000 plus 2,000 plus 1? I'm trying to remember.
I don't believe they're all the same.
Okay.
Yeah, population and district. All right, Peter?
Oh, the non-resident fees, I mean, there's no, I don't know, just, is that all, all the fees been looked at, present and non-resident, have they been, if I'm mistaken?
I've got a shot.
Sorry? Have all the fees been rectified based on what's going on, that you do a survey or?
No, we always have the, the non-resident fee you're talking about, is that?
Well, resident and non-resident.
Just some fees, if we run a different camp, if we run a different camp and the fee changes, that, that's what that is, that's, that's all it is. We get out of new camp, or do an older camp, and it could be a different contractor doing the camp for us, and they're giving to us maybe less or more than the last one, and that's all it is, it's just adding, usually most of it's added in the camp.
Okay, thank you.
Kevin?
Go ahead.
On, on 112?
Yes.
Why is a zoning permit required if we're putting a shed on our own property?
There, it's a donation and they're erecting it, so.
It's the, it's the.
Anytime you owe anything, you just waive your fee.
It's a donation and someone else is doing it.
Right, but my point is, why do you need a, why do you need a permit if it's on our property? If we're giving them permission to do it? I mean, I grant that.
As we comply to the laws, everybody else does.
Yes.
It's, it's baseball.
It's a little, I understand, but still.
And it's a great donation.
But if you have, if you were, I guess, I don't know, Jack can help us out, but I think if you're, if you're leasing out property, you're letting out people using it, and there's things being improved, I don't know, it's the right thing to do, so.
But we need, they, we're still.
We don't have to by law follow all the zoning requirements, but in the ministry, because of the council, we generally follow except for used areas.
Right, so it's a, it's a, it's a good business practice to again, have the permit filed.
Correct.
And have it approved by the zoning board.
Correct.
All right, anyone else? I entertain a motion to move?
I'll move.
Move by Mr. Youngblood?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Deportaire, roll call, please.
Mr. Verribough?
Yes.
Mr. Deportaire?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Is he late?
Yes.
Mr. Youngblood?
Yes.
All right, 6C, library, HVAC contractor award. I mean, Jack, there was some, I suppose some additional correspondence with that?
Yes, Professor Walker is here this evening, and he can explain when we open the bids, and the second low bidder has challenged, the low bidder on the ground that he did not list his electrical subcontractor in the documents. State law requires that the four big subs all be listed in the bid, and it's a fatal defect if you don't do so. However, the low bidder says he's trying to employ an electrician to work on this project, so the decision has to be made whether you're going to award the low bidder, and I believe the second low bidder has two pleasure tonight, would like to be heard. I'm not sure if the low bidder does or not.
Can I ask what the delta is between the two low bids?
Yes.
And a package.
It's like 20 grand.
Yeah, 19,000, I think.
Now, legally, we're required to accept, assuming that the, the low bidder had included the name of the electrician, we would be legally obligated to accept that, that bid?
That's correct.
Unless they weren't qualified for services.
Right.
Have they since notified us as to who the elect, their electrical contractor?
Well, they can't add a subcontractor after the bid is open, but what they've said is they're going to have one in their employee as opposed to a subcontractor.
So he's going to be paid directly?
Correct, and the employee with benefits and.
Okay, so essentially not a sub, it's going to be an employee of the, of the contractor that's been awarded the bid.
Was that passed muster with the state?
Well, there's no case law on it. As I said, the case, statute is clear that if you don't list a sub.
I don't want to say something that's against the law.
Yeah, we can be first.
Maybe we wish we could discuss in closed session briefly, I think the legal aspect is.
I think we probably should.
I'd like to. We've got to all.
I think we should hear from the parties here tonight and then discuss in closed session and get your opinion.
I think that's the best.
John?
My name is Rob Smith, I represent Professional Account Control. This is the head of easy order. The project. This is the head and easy owner, the project manager. Our contention is that, just as when you do a project, you would hire anybody as needed for that project, an HVAC technician as needed for a project, we are hiring an electrician for this project under our employee, under our insurance, and I have an application right here from the electrician in our employee to actually, he's working part-time for us, which is, I don't see any conflict for that, as long as when we apply for the permits, he's a licensed electrician under our employee that does not break any subcontractor agreement because he is not a subcontractor. He is an employee of our company. He's more qualified to do the job. We have licensed HVAC techs on the job, and we ought to look there, and I don't see a conflict with this. If need be, we can give you, we can give you several applicants that applied for this job. This is our, right now, our primary one that we like, and we're hiring him for the job. We already gave him a go-ahead, and we haven't even received the contract on the job yet, but we will employ him for the job, and he will be under our insurance and under our employee.
Questions, anyone?
Presumably if something happens and he can't work or.
We will have another one. As long as that, according to the state, as long as a licensed electrician signs the permit, and against the conflict of the subcontractor, he's not a subcontractor, he's an employee. So I would say.
Nothing says you can't do that.
Jack, are there any issues that we need information on to be able to continue the discussion in closed?
No, it's the second low bidder. You know, this evening, they did send a letter, but they haven't come.
Okay.
Yeah, we can discuss briefly in closed.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
For our plumbers, the year management program has ownership interest in the contract.
All right, so we'll discuss this further in executive session. Six D, dear management program.
Included in your package, there were some pictures. Ed and some of the gentlemen from Blue Ridge actually went through a couple of the properties. There is one tree stand that is still up. Excuse me?
I have a question. Why don't we, since it's our property and someone else has got a tree stand on it, why don't we get the cops out there?
I don't know why. Might be there's a stand.
Well, it's, it will be disappearing shortly, so if someone wants to reclaim their property, they better go get it. We also, when we were going through, we found shotgun shells, which, you know, is clearly not in the ordinance.
Miniature campsites?
Oh, I mean, up off of Charlotte Hill is a total dump.
Okay. So maybe having a little more activity in there is not a bad thing.
I sent you something last week about doing ordinance just.
Well, I did a resolution. It was in your bag.
Right.
Now, I did not have everything, I was just asked with the resolution that to incorporate the terms of the year management program, I think I did not have that.
Normally, you know, any project we've done, and we've seen somebody see something that shouldn't be there, we usually take it, and then when someone comes to claim it, we tell them that you're not supposed to be in there.
Well, some of this stuff is quite far in, you know, particularly off Charlotte Hill. We can take a truck down at some point and carry it out, and that will be done. But when we were walking there the other day, we did not.
That's not good.
It's not good. It's not worth, I'm sure the neighbors on Charlotte Hill aren't particularly happy, wouldn't be happy to know that there are shotgun shells in this deer blind, but there are. So, you know, the next thing is really moving on to the new ordinance.
Well, they do resolution authorizing because we do the ordinance allowing hunting as part of the year management program on the property. And at page one oh two of the packet, this is draft resolution allowing Warren, I mean, Blue Ridge, sorry, wrong color, Sportsman Club to conduct it. And as I said, if you want to proceed on it, I didn't have all the backup materials in my gear, so I would just add a new paragraph two, which would say that the Sportsman Club shall comply with the terms and conditions of the Partners Development Year Management Program twenty sixteen, in terms of which are incorporated in my reference.
Can we put those pictures in the file, too?
Absolutely.
Because I just don't want somebody to be blamed for making a mess in there and it wasn't them. It's almost like, you know, a preoccupation inspection, I guess.
We have them in black and white and color.
There you go.
That's nice, I saw them.
Anyone else?
And Ed has about another fifty pictures.
Well, no, you should put all those in there because, you know, later on, someone's going to say, oh, you're hunters, all of a sudden they made a big mess. No, they didn't, really.
Okay, I mean, I.
They were good stewards, well, hopefully.
Just was trying to get him to send a couple.
It's the right thing to do.
Succinct ones.
And we have in here that we can revoke this authorization at our discretion at any time for no cause.
Correct.
Yes. All right.
There's one aspect of the plan which I don't know if it was, may not have been updated, but the green team and everybody else has been working on this, has been using the same, has been using the person that has introduced this in many other areas, and that is, this usually requires a do before buts, and we might just want to have that edited, but we can perhaps do that at a different.
And that will go on the plan, so.
Perhaps, I could talk to.
I think we can, we can give a change in, in with her, like you say.
It's the general term, you know?
Say as amended by the council.
Yeah, I mean, it's now, I think it's probably considered the quality program, but, so I'm not sure if there's a, if the document, if we did that at least.
Okay. Anthony, we're going to number this now? Sixteen one-one-nine?
One-one-nine.
Okay, I'll just hand motion to move, resolution sixteen one-one-nine, authoring deer management hunt on borough all land as amended by the council this evening.
I'll move.
Now, Mr. Deportaire?
Sir?
Second by Councilman Wade. Roll call, please.
Mr. Vermaut?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Deportaire?
Yes.
Okay, use of holograms from rocket launch program, something that's done every year for the program?
No problem.
Anybody having objections?
No.
All in favor?
Bottoms will advocate.
Sure, we're good. Next.
All right, six F, Claremont Steps. I think we're at a point where we're all in favor, and we have a resolution in our package this evening.
I'm not a hundred percent sure I'm in favor.
Okay.
Partly because.
You might get to vote now.
I know that the Public Works Committee came out two weeks, three weeks ago, I guess it actually was, saying that they were in favor of it. I guess, you know, is the only reason that we are in favor of it is because we're going to take the money out of open space?
No, we actually have a petition here that was handed to me tonight from Anthony from the neighbors.
There's a couple of things going on. One of the things is the top wall. We spoke about it last meeting, that being redone, and then John took a closer look in how it's built into the stairs. So if you do one, it really only makes sense to do the other. Am I paraphrasing that correctly? I mean, it extends out, so, and then closing it up.
The, yeah, I think our original thought was removing the stairs may save a lot of money and be something that we could, you know, we could really look at, but the more we investigate the project, the less savings are there based on what we would have to do to seal off the upper portion of the stairs. It's only, you know, as we pull, the stairs are in two sections. One comes down off the actual, we'll call it a parapet, but off the wall, and then there's actually a gap that comes down. So while the main section of stairs may be able to be removed fairly easily, to.
Rebuild or pin.
To build the wall around the whole top and make it look consistent is, we're getting closer and closer to the cost of simply repairing the steps, so, I mean, that was my intent when we looked at it. It's just, we're not coming up with a good way of taking them out without putting our costs up there, still being fairly substantial.
It also came up, I mean, the wealth money, a portion of the money's been budgeted, and it is actually a part, as we raised, it's one of our meetings. It's research, and in fact, it is, and, you know, the funds that we have, the portion of open space, while I'm in favor of using it for our plan, it is to do major capital improvements for preservation of our facilities. So, I mean, even if it's not something that people are jumping and running, planning on, we can talk about the, including some of the placings that have been there in the past, but it is a minimal replacement.
People will walk instead of driving.
Now, what's missing on the, what's missing on the ordinance is the dollar amount in section one.
And that we have, we have eighty thousand allocated as a budget figure, right, Ralph?
There is a, there is a budget of capital.
Capital.
For eighty thousand dollars currently. There is two hundred and twenty thousand dollars unencumbered in the open space fund.
But that's not. We don't need all of that.
No, we have to plug, we have to plug in a number here. That would be a reasonable number now, if we decide to move forward with the resolution this evening.
I thought we had numbers. Do we have the numbers for this?
We were saying it's been around one-twenty-five, one-thirty. One-twenty-five, one-thirty.
Entire project.
Eighty plus fifty.
Well, and I think, I think in terms of appropriating funds, you should go north of that. If you don't use it, that's fine, but you don't want to have to come back with a new ordinance, so, you know, let's, if everything, John, is, we're playing with one-twenty-five. I mean, if we look at one-fifty, it gives you some room to negotiate in case they find something, because we haven't gone out to bid on this yet. We don't know where the number's going to come in at.
And then we could always return the monies to the open space fund, Ralph, if we don't.
If you can't, any ordinance like that, you cancel and goes right back to its origin. So if it's appropriated and there's some left over, that would automatically go back or take it back. A resolution would need to be put before you, and you cancel it, you can cancel it back.
So I suggest that we put seventy thousand in the line on section one, that more than should sufficiently cover the cost of the project.
How much?
Seventy, because we've already appropriated.
Seventy and eighty, we give us one-fifty to work on a project, and if it's not spent, it will go back into, or could go back into the funds.
This thing has gone from eighty thousand to a hundred and thirty thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand in like a month.
Well, we're not saying we're going to spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we're saying we're going to appropriate the money like Billy said, just in case.
If we put in less and it comes inside the works, we still have that, we can provide that fund before we step to the doctor.
And we have to amend the ordinance.
Yeah. We're contracted, we have to do the ten sixty day category, which we have to do one more, so I can certify it once a day.
Ralph, is there a dollar, is there a number? I put seventy on the table. Is there a number that you would suggest that's different, or?
No, I gave the total amount that is unencumbered in the open space development, not the development portion, the maintenance portion, so seventy thousand, one-twenty, maybe if you're comfortable with that balance left after that. I didn't know what the government value is comfortable with as a balance would be in the open space. But again, for capital stuff, so, I mean, that's, that's a good reservation. Right, right, yeah, no, there's millions of the development portion. We need to reserve some of it just if we end up doing another major project.
Okay. So what do you suggest? Give me a number.
Well, it seems to me that we're sort of putting the cart a little bit before the horse here. We ought to really know the scope of the project.
Well, we discussed numbers last meeting. We were at one-twenty-five, one-thirty, right, John?
Are you comfortable with one-twenty-five, one-thirty?
Well, at Public Works, we discussed again, having a little bit of a cushion, because the other thing we identified as we got up there, the rails are non-compliant with ADA. You know, we have to put new rails down the steps, the rail up along Somerset.
So that's, that's where there's another issue?
There, there, there's more steel work, there's specialty structural work that has to be done, and I don't think it was ever contemplated.
Right, and, you know, the disagreement, I think, to spend current tax funds on the project is, I think, offset a little bit by the fact where, if we can use the open space funds, we can then use the other dollars if we don't spend them on other projects. You know, you talk about the roads or the signs or something else.
Well, we can't spend open space money on roads.
Exactly, but you can spend it on the stairs. So I would, I would argue that you should.
I'm not in favor of doing open space just to, to, yeah, use as a patch for the budget shortfall, yes, that makes sense. It's a partial, it's based on partial, you know, our regular budget, but I don't think, you know, that, you know, we have to do, we have irrigation, we have basketball courts, we've got some pool that needs help, you know, a lot of other stuff, so.
John, what do you think the rails will cost? Additional work?
And Janet, too, we talked about costs, and we've, we've already spent ten, twelve thousand dollars of engineering. We can continue to spend money, and we haven't done anything yet.
Right.
So let's, let's come up with a dollar amount, and, you know, it's going to be sufficient, I would like to hope, to cover the cost of the project.
No, sixty.
Yeah, I would go with a minimum of fifty and maximum seventy. Peter suggested sixty, so there you go.
I'll go to sixty-three.
Let's keep round on.
All right, Peter's comfortable with sixty?
Comfortable with sixty?
Sure.
Anyone else, any other offers?
I'm not.
Jan is?
I mean, I, you know, if we're thinking it's a hundred and thirty, thirty thousand additional cushion is a lot of money, I think.
It's not a thirty thousand additional cushion.
We had eighty already appropriated.
I understand, we had eighty.
So eighty and sixty is one forty.
Then we went to one-thirty, and then we talked about a twenty thousand dollar cushion. Now all of a sudden, you're talking about a thirty thousand dollar cushion.
No, ten thousand. No, ten.
Ten thousand if those are the railings, all the things that have been discovered.
Right, but we were at a hundred and thirty, and you did a twenty thousand dollar cushion. Now you just upped it to thirty thousand.
No, he reduced it by ten.
I reduced it by ten.
He reduced it from twenty to ten.
Let's vote on the sixty.
Seventy was a, was a twenty thousand dollar cushion. Sixty thousand would be ten thousand dollar cushion.
Okay, I see what you're saying. I'm talking, thinking one sixty.
And to be honest, you have to have contingency in there, because when you pull that apart, you don't know what you're going to find.
It's complicated, for sure.
You might find someone buried under it, God forbid.
Missing stone mason from a hundred years ago.
Yeah, the guy that didn't do the job right the first time.
Hey, Jack, does this introduce, now do we move?
Yes, you did.
All right. I want to entertain a motion to move ordinance sixteen one-twenty, I think?
Seventeen twenty-one.
Seventeen, seventeen twenty-one?
Yes, this is.
Okay, yes. Appropriating sixty thousand dollars from the Borough Open Space Trust Fund Development to be used to repair the Claremont Steps. And when's the public hearing, Anthony?
On June twenty-seventh at seven PM.
And that a public hearing will be heard on June twenty-seventh at seven PM. Stand in motion? Move by Mr. Deportaire? Second, second by Mr. Youngblood. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
It's the first one to be here.
I was waiting.
Unfortunately, I'm not here on the twenty-seventh, so it doesn't matter.
All right, gap legislation support. Jack?
Yes, the gap, just the period from nineteen ninety-nine through twenty fifteen, this fellow's essential out of business, and the municipal expert, E-Consult, position is that there is no gap obligation, because any obligation during that period should be included in the present obligation, present need for affordable housing. The Fair Share Housing Center and Kinsey, their expert, has taken position that there was a legal obligation, there was a legal obligation for municipalities to provide affordable housing during that period. So far, three judges have agreed with the Fair Share Housing Center, and it's resulted So far, three judges have agreed with the Fair Share Housing Center, and it resulted in, I think, 79 more minutes on our number, sometimes it resulted in hundreds of additional minutes. But in any event, the municipal consortium has appealed that to the development division, which is due to hear the case, and also, there's been a bipartisan bill introduced in the legislature to say that there is no obligation during that gap period. The housing obligation under Mount Royal is the prior, prior need, the present need, and the prospective need for the next 10 years. So this bill is a bill that can do that, and the consortium has asked that all the municipalities support that legislation, and I think it's a good idea.
Jack, I know that this has been going back and forth between the gap and all of this stuff, but... The affordable housing concept is partly based on population, right?
It's based on a lot of...
A lot of factors.
The deployment of population.
Has really gone up, it's gone down, I think.
Too flat.
About correctly. To read those reports makes your hair hurt.
Yeah. I suggest that we pass this.
That's discriminatory.
Jack, there's no, this won't be viewed adversely by our adoption of this?
We're already in adversary litigation, so...
Yeah, we're already involved, so?
With 400 and something of it?
Yes.
Yes. All right, everybody comfortable? All right. This is going to be sixteen one twenty, Anthony? I entertain a motion to move resolution sixteen one twenty in support of adoption of S. 2254 slash A. 3821 to clarify municipal affordable housing obligations. Move by Mr. Youngblood?
I'll second.
Second way, Councilman Wade, roll call, please.
Mr. Grandma?
Yes.
Mr. Deportaire?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Wade?
Yes.
Mr. Youngblood?
Yes.
All right, we have a, a rough draft of a resolution on Bedwell sidewalk agreement, Borough Bernardsville. Anybody have any comments or concerns that are questions? John, anything from Public Works?
I've talked to Jack and I, and I've hardly seen back and forth. Jack did a really good initial draft to address our concerns concerning the installation of the sidewalk on Borough property primarily to assist students at Bedwell Middle School reaching around the sidewalk. We just wanted to make sure that Borough is adequately...
Give me the buses?
From a construction, primarily maintenance after shat, snow, ice, structural damage to the sidewalks. And we disagree with what we have a good job of the municipal center. This, in the parking areas we talked about previously, that were curating or blown at some point, is that, where does that come? I'm not sure I understand.
Well, is, I think, question. Have you heard anything back from Nancy Hunter on the letter you sent to her?
Not since, I just got an email 10 days ago, maybe from her saying she apologized, but I haven't responded. And that was on the overall issue of memorializing, you know, the relationship between the district and the Borough. And this is just a piece of that that, you know, John wants to move ahead on. So I just got that one short email saying, sorry, do you have my response?
The parking area that had been used only...
The cool parking area.
The cool parking, yeah, completely separate. I treat this as separate, okay.
Right, the question is, should we, should we wait on this agreement until we have some progress on that shared services proposal with the school board?
In the interest of helping them construct a sidewalk, I suggest that you maybe keep the two separate. They were anxious, they actually wanted to begin two weeks ago, and we informed that that was impossible with the drop-off of students. There's no way...
How do they do it? Makes no sense.
We encouraged them to come up there during, you know...
We waited to pave the place till they were finished, remember?
We told them in no uncertain terms, you're waiting till after school's out to make this... It might be five or six days between 1st of July and school, mostly.
Cheryl, is this going to interfere with people getting in and out of the pool?
But it's on...
You know, I'm sure, I'm sure we can make it out.
Sidewalk's on the other side of the street, right?
It is on the other side of the street. There's going to be a short period of time when there's a direct conflict. We can do what we did when we paved East Wind Pool driveway and reroute it the other way.
I honestly think we should bundle this. You know, we should meet sooner rather than later, just to have some kind of an understanding, some kind of, you know, quick outline, to be quite honest with you.
The other item was a, was a separate item, but brought up a bigger thing I think Jack's letter was really about in general. So I think this is okay to do this at this point, because either way...
We'll lose leverage. I disagree.
Well, you did lose your leverage, but if, if they have to get this project finished...
It's not, I'm sorry to interrupt, but it's not real, I don't think of it as leverage. I just want to get it done quickly. You know, get it off the table quickly. It's, it's in both of our interests to do it as fast as possible. Get it in, get it out, get it done, and you know what? We'll be focused, they'll be focused, because they have a timeframe also. They want to get this in.
Jack, in terms of correspondence with their attorney, how long do you think it's going to take to wrap up an agreement?
A general agreement? I wouldn't think it would take very long, you know, with the...
Couple days? Couple days?
Yeah, I agree. So I'll follow up with Nancy Hunter.
They're already dragging their feet, though.
Right.
John, are we losing any deadlines here? I mean, it's their project.
It's theirs.
It's our project.
It's theirs. I mean, you know, I'd like to put it off, you know, they can call you right away. You can put something together real quick.
Yep.
And we can get it all done.
Put it off for me.
How long would it take to do that sidewalk?
It's not as long, a week.
Yeah.
That, I mean, because you're also looking at, like, fall break, you know, the teachers convention. So, I mean, there are other times with the driveway.
That's a few of them.
Well, it's a part of an overall package, and we're not going to do anything in isolation.
Gets things done quickly.
I do ask that if it does delay for whatever reason, that we should at least, if you like to, I'll reach out to Nancy. They may not even know that we're looking at this kind of an agreement as a condition of doing the sidewalk. So at the very least, if you... I think Jack, I'll reach out to him or Jack, reach out to him and say, you know, there's stipulations. You prefer me or Jack? It's the best thing, just to work with Jack.
That's fine, we'll follow up on mine.
It's up to you. Absolutely.
Okay. All right. That's it. Any other council members have anything before we go into session?
Yeah. No, I'm good. No, who's talking? Sorry.
Anyone else? I entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session, where we discuss Board of Health, attorney client privilege, redevelopment plan, contract negotiations, public works contract, potential litigation on post Kuna drainage improvements, and library HVAC.
Come on.
Did we do the rocket watch?
Yeah. Yeah, we approved it. We already said, go ahead. We've resolved it.
There is one thing before we go, is we have the grant last year that we got for 22,000 and change to do a trail from the holograms to the school, next to the interview, I love property, to Patriots Path. We have to cross water, and I just want to make sure that's clear that we're going to need a, to apply the DDP for water crossing permits, and that, that is something that we're all aware of and no patients to do.
Okay.
You're simply applying for permits?
Yes.
Okay.
Crossing the little stream?
Put your sunshine on, I guess.
Oh, yeah, no problem.
All right, a motion to adjourn?
We will be coming out taking action.
I'll move. All right, move by Councilman Schmidt, second way, Councilman Youngblood, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain, the ayes have it.